I will call this meeting of the Bellevue City Council to order. This is the extended study session for Monday, September 9th, 2019. We have the executive session listed first. However, we are going to move to approval of the agenda. And as been our practice of recent is we are going to do oral communication first, then we'll do the executive session. So with the agenda amended in that way, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the amended agenda.
Moved and seconded to approve the amended agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. I guess with that, and I didn't catch this, we will do... Do we have someone here to receive the National Drive Electric?
We will. Somebody will be coming in.
Okay. So what we will do, they may have been told that we would do it in a different order. So we will just proceed now to... We'll put that on hold and we will proceed to communications written in oral. Communications written in oral. You have three minutes to address the Bellevue City Council on anything that you would like to address us on. Given the number of people in the audience and most of the faces I know, I don't think that we will go the full 30 minutes. So we will take the people in the order that they have signed up. If you are unfamiliar, when the green light goes on, you are on the clock. The yellow light signifies that you have one minute remaining. And when the red light goes on, we ask that you stop. So I think a couple of people are now arriving who are signing in. So if you would call the first person who has signed up to speak, I think we can move into that.
The first speaker signed up tonight is Alex Zimmerman.
It's on. You're good.
Yeah. The high my doori nazi, combi nazi, demo pick from animal farm, Gestapa antisemite and killer. My name Alex Zimmerman. Are you talking about...
So Mr. Zimmerman, I would ask that you not attach, and we can hold that for just a moment, not attach names to or say that people are antisemite or other things along those lines, ascribe to the council members. I would appreciate that. So back on the clock.
Nothing personal. Yeah, I don't mention name, no. It's okay. But antisemite is absolute legal word and people use this every day right now. Hundred times per day. Okay. So situation right now very simple. Economica, politica, economica, culture, all staying together. You broke in one sign, broke everything. Why? And I explain to you why. My opinion right now very strange. We have a big problem right now with Seattle in King Country. Is this problem, I explain to you in detail. Why? I think in fascism got bigger and bigger and bigger. And you open newspaper, everything is a nightmare right now. Republican almost gone, so we have a one-party system by definition. I have 11 trespasses from Seattle for 1,200 days, so I cannot go to council chamber. Yeah, interesting. I have few trespasses from King Country, so right now I have, a couple weeks ago, I have trespass from King Country, what is given by sheriff. Why sheriff acting like a political police, like a Gestapa, is very complicated for me and I'm totally confused about this. But yeah, you have a power with you like a cockroaches. It's okay with me. So why is it doing this? I'm only one Jew who go and speak and they counsel from Seattle, counsel from King Country, scared when I go and speak only for my two minutes, sometimes for two minutes. Guys, I'm so sorry. I'm not Karl Marx and not Trotsky, you know what it mean? I spoke only for two minutes, 2,500 times, but only for two minutes sometimes. And I spoke against, what does mean? Okay. I spoke for American capitalism because American capitalism, I think, is the best what is I know right now, probably for all my life. So situation right now very simple. This is exactly what's happened. One-party system never have a positive for the people. It never economica will be good because Democrat right now still billion in billion for us opting like a mafia, like organized criminal. So right now I speak to everybody who pardon, not freaking idiot, idiot, absolute legal word, or cretina, you know what it mean? We cannot spend $100 billion when 50 percentage people in King Country totally poor, 20 percentage make less than $10,000. Stand up, America. We need cleanses doori chamber from fascism in King Country. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Karen Morris.
Ms. Morris?
Hello. Karen Morris, my address is on file. Last January, staff set up a focus group meeting for those who have lived near an encampment and participated in permit process. Invitation was by letter two weeks before that midweek, midday meeting. Seven participated, one by phone. Since four neighborhoods had hosted and we were told 17 were invited, about four per site. I was puzzled why some who met the stated criteria were not invited. It was not a long meeting. My recollections and notes show we didn't get into specifics about regulations, but mostly had general discussion about issues that came up and how they had or had not been dealt with. Our experiences were seemingly much more problematic from my neighborhood than others, and I will communicate later about possible reasons for that. Four of the seven people were from my neighborhood where five stays out of the total 10 had occurred. We heard the process had begun in that first quarter and would go to the council at the end of March at the latest, and then more public process would happen. In May, I heard that the council would discuss it in June. Didn't happen. Some of us knew about a pretty hard deadline at year's end. At least twice before, when such a deadline existed, action was taken at the last minute without us having any notice of it a head of time and we found out after the fact. In both cases, an extension of the consent decree happened. We thought perhaps that was coming again. Then in mid-August, I heard this issue came up in a conversation of the mayor's where he said that I and my neighbors were involved in a redoing of regulations. I was surprised. I planned to check in September after council hiatus. Finally, at the very end of August, I got an email following up on the January 31st meeting, then seven months passed. In my neighborhood, that went to three households, only those who made the prior meeting. Others who met stated criteria were not contacted now or in some cases either time, including one who originally responded with strong interest in participating, but in a possibility of attending the first meeting. A timeline has now been laid out that concerns me. This even more than the men's shelter is a citywide issue. Possible sites are located throughout the city in many residential neighborhoods and in close proximity to each other and to other sensitive uses. The low-barrier men's shelter is now year-round and its capacity has repeatedly been described as adequate to Bellevue's needs into the foreseeable future. This raises logical questions about the need for tent cities here and the implications about how they should be regulated if so. The mayor had mentioned this link in past council discussion. We need to explore that and other issues fully. It is worrisome that whenever the reason for repeat, whatever the reason for repeated delays in the timeline addressing this issue, the unfortunate end result is to shorten the window of opportunity for public research and input and push it into the busy last quarter of the year. I hope all efforts will be made to mitigate that. Thank you for your attention and I look forward to meeting with all of you soon.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, realist, is Angie.
My statement is a bit more hastily prepared. However, I am... My name is Angela Trnaisik. I do live in Bellevue in the Crossroads area. My address is on record. I've been a Bellevue resident and property owner since 2013. Some people question if I have any stakes or right to an opinion on this Luca permitting process since I wasn't here for the 2005 proceedings. I think after being here for six years, paying taxes, being involved in city council meetings and in previous mediation attempted between a neighborhood group and one of the encampment hosts, I am fully aware of the process and have some well-informed opinions and concerns. Based on years of following these attempted deregulation efforts at local county and state levels, some of us have the following concerns. Cities, the city should not, or the city should take into account not only impacts on the homeless, but also their duty and charge of public health and safety for all within the city. Outdated, outdated is often code for we want you to accept our interpretation of what current court cases and such mean, and we expect to get concessions based on that. We in this situation being the hosts and the operators. Simplified process can mean taking out a lot of the regulation that the city, the hosts and the operators may not like and remove opportunities for neighborhood input and some give and take between hosts and neighbors. Consistently through the region implies that Bellevue should move to some much lower common denominator, not that others should compromise also, meaning if what's happening in Seattle is not a desired outcome for Bellevue, why would we look to Seattle's current regulations to guide our own forward movements? Flexibility does mean concessions and that are committed to working with adjacent neighborhoods could just mean rhetoric. The criteria could be ripe for challenge and extension to all, committed or not. Again, streamlined could threaten substantive neighborhood input and overall accountability. 120 days with 12-month gap is noticeable change and does not mention whether this is per site or in the city as a whole. Affiliated groups have pushed for as much as eight months out of every year at every site with only a three-month gap. And that can be multiple sites within the city at the same time, as long as they are 1,000 feet apart, which is about two and a half blocks. Neighbors of sites have often found meetings that take place after permit issuance ineffective at encouraging compliance to commitments and stop going to these meetings. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else signed up?
That's it.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council tonight? Seeing none, that will be the conclusion of public comment. We will be having the issue of the land use code relating to tent encampments on, with religious organizations after we come back from the executive session. I think what we... Yes?
If you wanted to read the proclamation...
Oh, yeah. Let's take care of the proclamation now. If the individuals are all here... I see. Okay. So good. We will do the proclamation and then I'll give the reasoning for the executive session. So this is about National Drive Electric Week. Whereas petroleum-fueled vehicles contribute to over 40% of our local greenhouse gas emissions and are major contributing factor for air pollution and climate change, and whereas to meet our regional and local greenhouse gas emission reduction targets, we must continue to explore alternative-fueled vehicles and alternative modes of transportation. And whereas the city of Bellevue has embraced electric vehicles through an investment in charging stations for our fleet and the public and by purchasing electric and hybrid vehicles for our fleet. And whereas the city of Bellevue will host a National Drive Electric Week event on September 10 at the downtown park for residents to come and learn about the benefits of driving electric vehicles from other owners and residents. And whereas Bellevue has one of the highest electric vehicle ownership rates in the state and the country, and whereas it is critical that the transportation sector partner with the public, with the public and private sector to move toward adoption of clean energy technology, including plug-in electric vehicles. And whereas Bellevue is dedicated to being a leader in the use of clean energy, establishing policies and programs that conserve energy and promote sustainability. And whereas September 14 through the 22nd, 2019, has been designated as National Drive Electric Week throughout the United States to educate our citizens about the benefits of plug-in electric vehicles and to promote their adoption. Now therefore, I, John Chelmanak, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim September 14 through the 22nd, 2019, as National Drive Electric Week in Bellevue and call upon all residents of this great city to join me in supporting the aims and goals of this very worthwhile effort. And I will sign that. And Steve, who do we have? Who is going to be speaking on behalf...
We have Chad Switters from Plug in America.
Great. If you'd come down and say a few words at the... And then we'll get a photograph.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. Chad Switters with Plug in America. I've been working on electric vehicle advocacy for over 10 years. A few of you have been in my car. And I want to say I've worked on this nationally and I really do think of Bellevue as a leader. My wife's first public charging experience 10 years ago this month, I believe, was in plugging in at Bellevue City Hall. I mean, you guys have a transportation technology partnership manager, for heaven's sakes. How many cities of this size have this? A lot of people see EVs like broccoli. It's good for you, but not really something you want. But what really excites me about them is that it can have benefits to the economy and owners really love them. And we really appreciate everything Bellevue has done. And tomorrow from 4:00 to 7:00, Bellevue Downtown Park is the event, so hope to see some of you there. Thank you.
It is a great event. I was there last year and hope that others will be there as well. So, great. What I'd like to do is this. Let's, I will do the, break us to executive session, but if we can get a photograph with council and yourself with the proclamation, we'll do that right after we break to go to executive session. So we now have for approximately 20 minutes an executive session under RCW 42.30.110-1I. We will be in for approximately 20 minutes and give us a few minutes to take the photograph. So I'm going to say we will be back at about 6:40 or a few minutes after that. We are back out of executive session and we're now moving to the study session. Our first item to discuss is the temporary encampment land use code amendments or Luca. Mr. Miyaki.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, just by way of background, the temporary encampment topic we're talking about, also known as tent cities sponsored by religious institutions, has been administered for the past 13 years in accordance with a consent decree that was adopted in 2006. The term of that consent decree expires in January of next year. And the council, knowing this, directed the staff to begin a land use code, a review of the land use code related to temporary encampments. Staff have conducted a review, solicited feedback from various different stakeholders and are here this evening to just present some information about the process and timeline. And at the end of the presentations, we are seeking council direction to move forward with the temporary encampment land use code amendment process. So joining us this evening is Mike Brennan, our Director of our Development Services Department. To his right is Tony Pratt, a senior land use planner, and to his left is Cindy Lynn, Assistant City Attorney. So that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mike for beginning the presentation.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Miyaki. Good evening, Mayor Chelmanak, Deputy Mayor Robinson and council members. As Mr. Miyaki mentioned, we are here to discuss temporary encampments and a recommendation to move forward with a land use code amendment that would address changes to the temporary encampment regulations. We are specifically asking for that council, for council direction to initiate that process and also for recommending that the council retain the process and hold a public hearing because of the involvement of a consent decree within the regulatory scheme. So Ms. Lynn will speak more to that in just a few minutes. So just in general, what we want to cover this evening is really some background and history about temporary encampments within the city, feedback that we have received from stakeholders, both signatories to the consent decree as well as neighbors around previous encampment locations. We want to talk about the public engagement and the schedule to advance a land use code amendment forward. So Ms. Pratt will speak to that. And then again, at the end, we'll be asking for specific council direction to begin the process if the council desires. So with that, I will hand the clicker to Ms. Lynn, who can speak about, a little bit more about the background and history.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. So I actually want to start a little bit before 2005, which is the first date on this timeline. Around 2004, the region was dealing with a lot of temporary encampments that were being hosted by religious organizations, including churches and temples, as an expression of faith. And the, there is a network of laws, including the federal and state constitutions and a federal statute commonly known as R. Lupa, that governs the expression of faith or the government regulation that impacts faith expression. And because of that body of law, the city felt it was important to move forward with a regulation that complied with those requirements. And generally, those requirements allow the city to regulate religious exercise so long as we are not imposing a substantial burden on such religious exercise unless the regulation is, further is a compelling government interest and is the least restrictive means to further that interest. And so with that in mind, in 2005, the city enacted our land use code, Chapter 2030U, which we'll refer to as Chapter 2030U throughout this presentation. And that governs for the city of Bellevue how temporary encampments will be permitted and regulated in the city. Shortly after the land use 2030U was passed in 2005, the first permit applicant, Temple Benaitora and Cher Wheel, the temporary encampment organizer and manager, applied for a permit under 2030U. A permit was issued containing several conditions on their operations. And after the permit issuance, a lawsuit was filed by the applicants alleging that some of the conditions, such as regulations that impose restrictions on the number of sinks and showerheads, for example, were unconstitutional because they posed a substantial burden under that legal framework that I described a little bit earlier. After the, as a result of the litigation, in January 2006, a consent decree was entered between the parties to the litigation. And that consent decree is essentially a settlement agreement that, it's a contractual agreement between the parties as to how the temporary encampments in the city would be administered and permitted under 2030U. So it's been a little bit over 13 years since that time. The parties have been operating since that time under a combination of the consent decree and Chapter 2030U. And at this point, the consent decree, which has been extended two times since 2006, is set to expire on January 27, 2020. And that is why we are here before you today to ask to move forward with a land use code And similar to kind of that backdrop that I provided about what 2030U does regulate, we also think it's important to clarify what it does not regulate. It does not regulate unlawful camping on public property, so for example, in our parks and right-of-way, or parking or sleeping overnight in vehicles. And council will recall that these issues were regulated several years ago, and we have ordinances that address those issues as well as processes for addressing these issues within the city. Similarly, this land use code amendment process will not regulate or relate to temporary or permanent shelters for persons experiencing homelessness. Those also have been addressed through other legislative processes before the council. So I'm going to turn this over now to Tony Pratt, who can talk a little bit more about the administration of the temporary encampments in the city between 2005 and the present day, as well as an overview of the neighborhood feedback we have received.
Thank you, Cindy. So I'm going to talk briefly about the temporary encampments from 2005 to 2016. I want to let you know that I processed all of the temporary encampment applications since 2005. There have been 10 applications total since that time. Temple Benaitora has hosted five times. That, you can see, that's the eastern portion of this map. Moving inward, the Church of Resurrection has hosted once. And moving west to the north is the First United Methodist Church, who has hosted twice. And then St. Luke's Lutheran Church, who has hosted twice as well. And the thing I, you see this cross-section of this map is, is that it's not for everyone. There's many religious institutions within the city, but we've only had hostings from these four entities. And in fact, we have not had another hosting since Temple Benaitora hosted in 2016, so there have been no further requests since that time. And then the other thing I want to let everyone know is, is that some of the entities that are on this map, St. Luke's Lutheran Church, seems to have moved from temporary encampment to more permanent forms of housing because they entered into a relationship with Imagine Housing and they just installed 63 units of affordable housing on their site earlier this year. So it's just a changing landscape with homelessness work. So before we get into the stakeholder feedback, I want to let you know that we conducted an internal review of where we are with the land use code 2030U, which again deals with temporary encampments and then also the consent decree and its interpretations. That set the framework and let us know where we needed to make changes and let us know how that we were stacking up. From there, we then went outward and then began having conversations with the stakeholders. So we went and engaged the original signatories of the consent decree, and then we also went out and talked to a neighborhood focus group of individuals who have lived adjacent to the four sites that you just saw on the map previously. So what we heard from the signatories is that tent cities are necessary and they have a right to exist. The signatories understand that this is not the best form of, or solution to homelessness, but they feel that if it's necessary because people need to live together collectively... but they feel that if, it's necessary because people need to live together collectively rather than individually. They also said that the consent decree and 2030-U are outdated. They also suggested that we consider a simplification of the permitting process for those religious institutions who have hosted previously. And then lastly, they looked at, stated to us that tent cities should be managed consistently throughout the region.
Tony, could you make sure council members know who the signatories are?
Yes. The signatories are composed of a collection of religious institutions such as Temple Benitora, St. Luke's Lutheran Church, Church of Resurrection, and the Greater Church Council, and then also the Sher Wheel, and then also Tent City Four. So those are the original signatories of the consent decree.
Just to clarify, Mayor, the Tent City Four and Sher Wheel were a joint signatory, and the Church Council represented the religious institutions that have hosted other than Temple Benitora, which is a separate signatory.
Thank you. So in regards to the, now moving to the neighborhood group feedback, and to be clear, what we did to try to, to staff a neighborhood focus group, we went back and we pulled every sign-in sheet from every hosting to 2005. We then also went back and ran the 600-foot radius and looked at the individuals who participated in the public meetings since that time. And because we felt that those individuals have, they came out, they spent the time coming into the meeting and invoicing their comments during the city-held public meeting. So this is the composition of the neighborhood focus group. So what we heard from this group is, is that they desired an increased accountability for encampment hosts and operators. And the reason that they said that is, is that whenever that they, an encampment, the process was completed, the deployment got out on the property, if there were operational failures, they felt like they lost contact with the host. So they wanted to be able to create a process that there could be after-action contact. So they also sought alignments between the consent decree and the land use code 2030-U. And the reason that they suggested this is, is that they're very knowledgeable of the consent decree and the interpretations that changed 2030-U. So as an example, if Tent City operates with one showerhead, then change the code so it's reflective to how Tent City operates. They also suggested that we look at best practices learned from previous hostings. And so during the focus group, we had information that was shared from, contacts from First United Methodist Church. And essentially, what they told us is, is that the church administration there listened to the neighbors. If the neighbors wanted a taller fence, they installed the taller fence and added, took it from six feet to eight feet. They also then created a neighborhood watch because there were several parents that attended the meeting that said that they were concerned about their children walking to school. So they then went out and formed a neighborhood watch to ensure that those activities took place safely. So those are some of the common practices that we've learned over the years. They also suggested that there be a Bellevue-based solution for temporary encampments. And then lastly, create flexibility for hosts who are committed to working with the adjacent neighborhood. So with all of that, that culminates to the next slide that Cindy's going to take you through to talk about our staff recommendations.
Thanks, Tony. So staff took the feedback that Tony just summarized and looked at areas where we felt that there was some alignment or potential for alignment. And we looked at those areas of alignment against the applicable legal framework and the obligation that cities have to, with respect to allowing free exercise of religion constitutionally under the Constitution and R. Lupa. In the meantime, in 2010, the state legislature also passed legislation that regulated, that governed how local governments regulate temporary encampments. And that RCW similarly reflects the obligation that the regulations we pass relate to health and safety, and that they do not create a substantial burden for religious, to religious exercise. So in light of that, we arrived at four primary recommendation areas. First is a permit process, a streamlined permitting process for religious hosts who have hosted temporary encampments in the past. The second area is some revisions to neighborhood engagement, which could include the addition of optional neighborhood meetings after permit issuance, as well as the elimination of a mandatory litter patrol, which I think the parties agreed they had no desire to continue. Some edits to the location, frequency, and duration of the temporary encampment deployments, potentially 120-day-long duration, and looking at a 12-month gap between temporary encampments within the city. And finally, alignment of the health and safety standards that are contained in the consent decree with the existing code.
So we want to talk to you a little bit about the public engagement and schedule. So we want to continue to inform the community stakeholders of the potential changes. There are process for requirements of the land use code, which legislate legislative efforts of the council. So we will hold a public hearing before council, and then also a courtesy public hearing before the EBCC. We want to enhance those process for requirements by establishing a web presence under Hot Topics, work with the PIO to message the Luca progression, and create a Luca inbox for commenters. And then lastly, as far as scheduling is concerned, we, this is a high level, just to give you an idea of what the dates would be, but they could be subject to change. But we anticipate that council study sessions will take place between September and November. We would tentatively get to the EBCC for courtesy hearing in November with a public hearing November 18, tentatively, and then with final action in December, and EBCC adoption in January. And again, the consent decree expires January 27 with any potential Luca taking, going into effect after that date. So with that...
So that wraps up the presentation from staff. And again, the request to council this evening is to give us direction on a recommendation to proceed with a land use code amendment to address temporary encampments hosted by religious organizations on their property, and also seeking council concurrence to, if you choose to proceed with the amendment, to retain oversight of the process and hold the public hearing.
So I want to ask for another piece of information that I believe is important to this, and that is, with the last signing of the consent decree, I believe there was some discussion with the judge and with the parties about whether or not we should be coming back and asking for an extension of the consent decree again. Is that accurate?
My understanding, and we can certainly look into that to confirm, but my understanding is that there was discussion of whether the consent decree would be extended again, and the feedback from the hosts at the time was that it would not. So in order to extend the consent decree, we are, all the parties are required to agree, and then to obtain the judge's approval.
Okay, so that, at that point, the host, and this was an extension for two years, right?
Right, that was, right, correct.
The first time, I think it was extended for just one year.
Correct.
The first extension. So we had the two-year extension, and in that, the hosts, the hosts or the, the signatories other than the city basically said, "We won't sign again."
This is my understanding...
I mean, basically said, "Want you to, want the city to process something and make the changes."
That's my understanding. And I do believe that there was some discussion at that time about having the two-year extension in order to have some time to process a land use code amendment.
Right. And that's why you did the outreach in January, you've met with council, done some briefings with us, did some outreach, right?
That's correct.
Is that we knew that this date was coming.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So I've got a lot of history in this, but I'm going to let others go ahead. It looks like Council Member Robertson is ready to go.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we've been, this has been pending ever since I've been on council for the last 10 years. We knew that this was coming. And I do believe it's time to move forward to amend the land use code so that we're no longer operating under a consent decree, and that we're ready to go. So I'm in favor of moving forward. To that end, when this is coming for action, there's certain information I would like to have available for myself that I think would also be helpful to the public in evaluating what the exact right, land use code language policies are. One is, I'd like to see a comparison of 2030-U, the terms of it compared to the terms in the consent decree. I know that we, I've been briefed on it in years past, but what exactly were the terms that were changed by the consent decree? Secondly, you know, where do they conflict? Secondly, I know there's been cases that have come out since the 2005 consent decree on temporary encampments. So I don't know if there's any new RCWs, state statutes, but there have been some that were proposed. I don't know that they passed. But are there new laws, new case law, that would impact our current 2030-U terms? You know, what are they, and how do they, how would they, compliance with that be required? How would our language in 2030-U be required to, to change? And then on the regional approach, it sounds like we're looking at what other cities are doing. I'd love to see something that compares in broad terms, some of the, any of the major policy issues on how the cities differ, with particular attention to how they differ on outreach and effective mitigation. So because we can learn from the region, I don't want to go to the lowest common denominator. I want to do something that's legal and that balances the needs and the rights of the religious institutions with neighborhood safety and cleanliness. So that's the kind of information I'll be looking for, but I'm very supportive of bringing this forward, and I hope that we continue to reach out to the folks who have been engaged. Do we have a website on this yet, or webpage?
Yes. I've been working with Brad Harwood. And so he has been posting things already to the Hot Topics page.
Right.
Yes.
So if we could have a, sign up for alerts on this item?
Yes.
Link on whatever page we set up. That way, when people find out about it, they can make sure that they stay informed through the process. It's a relatively, it's going to be a relatively short process, and we want to make sure people get timely notice so that they can come and testify at the public hearing or give public comment or write in with the council as things develop. Thank you.
I'm Mr. Stokes.
Yeah, I agree with that, Holly, and I think that you really set up a good path for us to go in this. And appreciate that. I know there's going to be a lot of communications, a lot of people in the neighborhoods coming forward, and the host groups as well. Looking at the, well, the four encampment host feedbacks on here, I think are interesting. And I think everybody's agreeing, the consent decree in 2030-U need to be looked at, and they're outdated, and there are different factors. And in fact, that's one of the things I think is the biggest issue in this whole piece is, what is the, really, what's the relevance and ongoing nature and maybe, I wouldn't say obligation, but rationale for continuation of these type of shelters? And how does it fit into the 2019, 2020, 21-going-forward landscape? They've served a great purpose, and they still have a purpose. I just think we have to put these things in context because it's not, these aren't isolated. They're not the same as, as our temporary location, permanent location for temporary shelter, or temporary shelters we have in the city. But again, it's taking a more holistic look at the whole issue of shelters and the need. And I think we ought to take that into account when we start talking about affordable housing and housing, how do we move out, away from homelessness, and what is the role, and could the role be better for these temporary shelters? So I think that gives us an opportunity to really take a look at that. And I, you know, looking around the region is good. I don't know that, I mean, there's a conflict in a sense about managing consistently throughout the region and having Bellevue solutions. I'm not sure, I'm not sure there's a lot of difference there, but we need to look at those kind of things, if what's important, and I think we will. And again, I think what's set up by both the neighborhood group feedback and the hosts are really good guidelines. So I think it's a good process, and I'm looking forward to it. And if we can get it moved, and then in January, getting something worked out and approved, that would be great.
Great, thank you. We're going to go council members on, council member Lee, council member New in the House, then the deputy mayor, and then myself.
So I also agree that we should be moving ahead and setting something up. It seems like, you know, 15, 14, 15 years is a long time to continually work through something that was a court settlement. So from what I can see, we've done the work of looking back and really trying to understand the history, and then we have the four areas for moving forward. I guess a couple things, I just want to make sure I was clear on, is we have the consent decree, and that, and then you said that in 2010, there was also an RCW that governed tent encampments, is that right?
That's correct.
And was any of that taken into, are the way that we permitted the tent encampments after 2010, or were we always just reverting back, or not reverting, but permitting based on the consent decree? So even if the 2010 RCW had some differences, as long as it's not more restrictive, we just went with the consent decree?
The consent decree remains in effect after 2010, and so the court still has retained jurisdiction over how we permit under 2030-U under the consent decree. However, the legal framework is very similar. It's extremely close to what the legal obligations already were that preexisted.
Okay. And then I want to make sure that I understood, you talked about that this is really around the federal and state expression for the faith community? And did I hear you say that this is intended to, to define what, how much we can regulate the religious expression as well as, and I thought I heard you say, the least restrictive means for the city to exercise our interests? Is that the bar?
That is the bar if the regulation imposes a significant, a substantial burden on religious exercise. It's not the bar under all circumstances and for all contemplated legislation.
Okay, so that's why, as you go forward and look at the Luca, actually looking at what others are doing, where that bar is, because it seems to me the biggest thing we're going to get in a Luca is really setting that expectation so everyone's clear about the rulebook by which we're all supposed to be conducting ourselves, right? Both in terms of what the city and the community can expect, as well as what the faith community, is that right? Because I feel like a lot of this stuff is somewhat interpretive about what does the least restrictive, and what, you know, public interest, and how do we balance all of that? Because this is one that, it is, it is about how we comply with the law and not necessarily something that the city is stepping forward and choosing to do on our own. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I was clear on that. Okay.
Council Member Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Like Mayor Shemar had mentioned, that was a tough issue, you know, and was brought, you know, to the council when we did in 2005. And I think we are very fortunate. I want to thank the religious organizations, the churches, that are willing to host these tent city homeless folks. And I want to thank the operators. I think they've done a great job to run it, you know, in a way that we haven't really had a lot of problems. And obviously, want to thank the neighbors who are willing to work with, you know, the homeless tent city. And so whether we like it or not, we want to do it or not, I think even, whether it's the right thing to do or not, I think it's the right thing to do. I agree with everybody. We probably don't have a choice anyway, because the consent decree has to have the agreement of the hosts. You know, if they don't go along with it, we... have the agreement of the hosts. You know, if they don't go along with it, we're not going to have a extent. We, you know, we're not going to, it doesn't make sense, you know, have the legal law, or to, court to force people to do it, and it's not, you cannot work this unless you have agreement. So I think that's the right thing to do, and whether we like it or not, it will, it will happen. And so I believe what we're doing is the right thing to do. We'll continue to work with good hosts, and we are, the only, the only thing that's really improvement, I believe, is the neighborhood outreach, really working with them. Because when we define our LUCA, you know, that would include that outreach piece, public input. And I would heard from, you know, some people already saying that they, well, not maybe, a little, but, you know, it, it cannot do everything perfectly. You know, there's always a time lag and whatnot, but I think we're making the effort, and I hope we can do as best we can, you know, to make it work for everyone. And so, I think this, based on our experience, based on the people who are working with us, and I think Councilmember Robertson asked us good questions. We need to figure out how other cities do, what I think RCW has been enacted, how does that affect our new LUCA requirements? You know, all these are part of the consideration. So I am confident, I hope that I believe, when we're done with this, this will be something that we can rely on consistently, reliably, and somebody mentioned streamline, all that stuff. So it would be, would be more reliable, better thing for everybody, without having to worry gee, every so often, what do we do? How do we do it? And even it's in the LUCA, LUCA can be revised anyway, right? Over time, if we hear things that we can improve on. So I think it's a good thing. So thank you for bringing it up, working on it, and thank you.
Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you, Mike, Tony, and Cindy, tonight, for your presentation. I'm also in favor of moving this forward. I think Councilmember Robinson certainly brought up a good point about the new case law. We certainly want to review that and review the region in favor of as well. Although, how many tent encampments are there in the region? Do we have a sense of that? And, and how many examples we might be looking at, or?
I do not have a sense of that.
Okay.
I do know that Tent City 3 exists in Seattle.
Right.
So, but beyond that, in Camp Unity, which is a split from Tent City 4.
Okay.
But other jurisdictions, other cities have regulations on that regulate temporary encampments.
Okay. So they might not have currently a tent encampment, or they do have regulations? Okay, so it's still worth looking at that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Some of your recommendations, the permit process and for that to be streamlined, I, I might argue that I can appreciate that, but if, if possible, legally, I would look at streamlining the permit process only for those operators. And I understand they have a very difficult job, and they do a lot of good work, but I would only streamline it for operators that have a consistent track record of working well with that community. So when community members are being, are being heard, adjustments are being made for that neighborhood or for that community based on issues that they bring forward, there's a way that we can track that, then I'm perfectly fine with per, streamline the permit for, for those operators. And then I had a question regarding the alignment of health standards to the consent decree. So is that to say that that alignment wasn't happening previously?
So what happens now is, is if someone comes in, they have to make a hardship request, because the code contains a hardship function and criteria.
Okay.
And so each time, because the consent decree set the standard of what those interpretations are, so if Tent City has one showerhead, within the consent decree, it says that that is possible with a hardship request.
Okay.
So the, the point of a potential LUCA would be that they would be able to do those things aligned accordingly without a hardship request.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome.
And last comment is, for me, the, the public engagement, it's not enough for me. Just because adding the hot topics, I mean, there's just too many residents that are not going to be going to, to that particular page. You know, they're only going to go there if there's some, there's an issue that's directly affecting them, or a neighbor tells them it's now a hot topic. So I feel strongly that there needs to be a more robust public engagement plan, be that direct mail, be that holding some kind of event or meeting closer to those areas that potentially could be impacted. But again, we're asking the public to come to us. I feel like we need to go to them a little bit more, so that we can better inform them and give them an opportunity to bring forward their thoughts and concerns, and support of this as well. It's not necessarily all negative, but again, I'd like to see just a little bit more robust of that, that public engagement plan as well. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you for the presentation. I do appreciate Councilmember Zahn's comments. This is, this is a tough one for me, because it's really hard to believe that a tent encampment is actually better for homeless people than the year-round program that we have going on in all our other faith community, or whatever, buildings. And I feel like, if we had a choice here, I would so much rather encourage other faith organizations to work with us with the year-round program, and work with congregations for the homeless, and give the homeless individuals tools to work with, and, and training, and counseling, and all the things that the year-round program does to get people back on their feet. And so if I was a public member listening to this conversation, I would be wondering why we aren't doing that. And I know the answer to that, but I wonder if you could just elucidate a little more on the legalities of why we need to go this route?
Well, generally speaking, the, there are the federal and the state constitutions, so I can speak to the broad framework, and then follow up with specific questions later if there are additional questions. But the federal and state constitutions prohibit us from substantially burdening religious exercise, and that is a similar prohibition in the ARLUPA federal regulation. The state requirement is that we legislate temporary encampments, if we do, to further the public's safety and health, and also that we cannot substantially burden religious exercise. And so some of our faith communities, particularly the ones that Temple Benaitora and others who have hosted, have already expressed to us that their religious exercise includes the spirit of public service, which may include hosting homeless, whether it's a temporary encampment or some other type of service to the homeless community. And as a result of that, we have limitations on the extent to which we can impede the religious host's ability to exercise their religion by hosting the temporary encampments. And, and that's what the subject of the litigation was, that was settled via the federal consent decree. And so that is what we have as a model for moving forward, in order to, to stay aligned with the legal framework that applies.
And so essentially, if we don't move forward with this, then we will be sued, and we will lose. If the church, or the temple, or whomever wanted to host, the religious community wanted to host a tent encampment, they could sue us, and we would probably lose.
I think if we don't move forward with the land use code amendment, there is a good likelihood that we may be sued. And I think if you like, we can provide a deeper analysis to you at a later date on.
No, I told you, I know the answer. I'm trying to get a public explanation, because I think a lot of people listening to this will be wondering. So I appreciate your response. And I think that what we're doing here is, is making this as best that we can for the community, and I appreciate all our council members' input on making this the best process that we can. So I do support moving forward. I do have one question on the timeline. So I see that you have in this East Bellevue Community Council hearing, and then you have East Bellevue Community Council adoption on January 7. Now, this is a group that voted to never have a homeless shelter within their boundary. So I'm curious as to how that's going to go down, and if they don't adopt it, what, what will happen?
Can I, can I just talk about the premise of your question? Because I don't think your, their premise was accurate. They did not vote to never have one. They voted to not apply our new ordinance, but the old ordinance of a, of a, of a conditional use permit still exists on any property within their boundaries. So they would go through a conditional use permit without the added benefits that are, that I consider added benefits that are in our ordinance.
With the community process that we put into.
Correct.
Okay, I see.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
But anyway, if they don't approve, what would happen?
I think on that particular question, there's probably a number of potential factors that would apply, and I would be, I think, we would need to actually work a little bit behind the scenes to provide a more specific answer to the question about what if?
Okay.
The, the East Bellevue Community Council acted in one way or another with respect to the ordinance that the council applied. Again, they have an approval or denial option, and the consequence of denial would be something we would have to think through a little bit, and come back with a little bit more analysis.
Okay. I just don't want to miss our timeline and yet go have a fair process, so. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I believe if they turned, if we passed something that changed our current land use code, and they denied it, the current land use code would apply within that area, I believe. I mean, I think it's a, it's a pretty binary decision.
Technically, I believe that's correct, and I think what Mike was saying was that the consequences of their operating
Right.
under that land use code without a consent decree in place are things that we would have to come back to council to discuss.
Couple of things. Can you explain the difference between a Tent City 3, a Tent City 4, and a Camp Unity, and the encampments that we might see traveling into Seattle along Interstate 90, or the encampments that we might see that are located on a city of Seattle property, like Tent City 3, or other encampments in Seattle? And there's sort of, there are some guidelines around these types of encampments.
So from a legal point of view, the temporary encampments that we're talking about this evening are permitted. So they're permitted by the city of Bellevue, they're permitted by other cities, and they're hosted in places based on a rigorous application process, such as the one that we have, both under the code and the consent decree. The encampments that you may see, you know, driving along the highway or out in public, generally are unlawful encampments. They're encampments individuals just decide to camp because they're homeless, and there's really no regulation over the health and safety standards. There's no regulation over how many residents can live there, or any of the other types of regulations that we impose on the permitting process, during the permitting process. So that's kind of a legal overview. And as I understand it from Tony, the various tent cities have slightly different, but largely similar operational codes of conduct and standards that also apply to the residence of temporary encampments that are permitted, but do not necessarily apply to residents of encampments that are along the highway or in other public places.
So the temporary, and there's, TC, Tent City 4 and Camp Unity are the two, I think, that operate outside of Seattle, and they're, they follow a pretty wide swath outside of Seattle. They have provisions dealing with certain levels of warrant checks on individuals. Could you explain that, and what the difference is between the two?
So the difference between Camp Unity and TC 4 is the level of warrant check, at least at the time, in 2012, when First United Methodist Church hosted them, they committed to having warrant checks every week. This is very different than how Tent City 4 operates. If you are a resident, and you become a part of the encampment, you get screened when you arrive, and then you don't have any requirement for screening afterwards. So that is the tacit difference between the two encampments.
What is the status on these types of encampments allowing for service agencies to come in and work with the homeless? I just remember when this first began, that TC 4 was not allowing agencies to come in and, and attempt to help people. And I understand now there has been some movement, at least at Camp Unity.
Also Tent City 4, and so that's one of the things that has progressed. And with the third deployment at Temple Benaitora, we found those issues that you were talking about. There were barriers between residents and the encampment host. So we figured that out, and made requirements, and changed how we built and looked at the staff report. And BPD and myself made conditions so that the person, a resident who wanted to get, go to get services, would not be penalized by the encamp, the operator for like, missing duties, or different things like that. Because if they missed those things, then they would be thrown out of the encampment. And most people didn't want that, so then they weren't going to get their services. So we tried to remove those barriers and make a requirement. And I believe at the last hosting, the fifth hosting at Temple Benaitora, those barriers were removed, and they actually had a room where a person could go and receive their services.
And is there still a requirement that, as part of staying in one of the tent cities, that you participate in public meetings?
That I don't know.
Because I do recall that that was a, a requirement. Again, I have to say, I was, well, it sort of devolved to me back in 2004 and 2005 to work on this very heavily as a council member. So I've got a lot of experience with this. The, so I guess what I would say is this, I've used up enough of my time here. But I would say the changes, I do have one more.
Okay.
I'm sorry, because I think it really is important. If, and if you can't speak to it, or don't remember, I will. But it was the issue of how we ended up in federal court, and why, if the consent decree goes away, we're back in state court dealing, most likely with a land use case. Okay.
I would have to look into that a little bit further.
Okay. So we were sued as a land use matter in state court. We petitioned to take it to federal court, because we believed our case was stronger in federal court, dealing with ARLUPA. So then people may not want to remember, or some people may not like hearing that. That's why a lot of times we've been criticized as having sued religious organizations. They essentially sued us. We just picked the site where the suit was going to be. I think that was a very smart move on the, on the city's part. And I think it ended up with actually a ordinance that people were able to work with. And in fact, now there is not as much interest in hosting tent cities on the part of religious organizations. So what I would say is, my thought on it is to be surgical on the changes. Let's go in and see what is, you know, what is working. There are elements of this that are working. I mean, I'm not too far from United Methodist, and it surprised me that they had held one as late as it was. So I mean, that, that was kind of a surprise to me. So in some ways, there, the visibility is, is lower. The visibility with the temple, with the number of times they've held, with the residents in Ms. Morris's neighborhood, I mean, that's been five times that they've been there. And, and that is, in my mind, a burden on any one neighborhood. That was always the concern that the city had, and I think it's a legitimate concern, that a temporary use is used so often, it becomes a, essentially a permanent use. So I really would like to see us, see us look at that. I, I know, I guess actually, the religious side and the neighborhood side disagree me, disagree with me when I say I thought this was the best ordinance that was adopted at the time relating to Tent City. And the reason I know that is the religious side and the neighborhood side disagree with me. So I think that there is some surgical use here. But I just want to make it clear that this is not an endorsement by the city council that this should happen on public property. This is really an issue of allowing for the expression of religion in, in a way that is is governed by a regulation that allows for that expression of religion but keeps our neighborhoods safe, make sure the people who are part of that encampment are safe, make sure the people who are doing that ministry to them are also safe. And I think that's what, that's what we need to focus on here. And I've always opposed having encampments like this anywhere, but this is something that we have to do for the freedom of religious expression. Not everybody on the council at the time agreed with that statement, but, and probably don't today, but that's from my standpoint, a very surgical look at this. I would agree to have, you know, to get as much public comment, but I will say the reality is there's very few places in the city where it would be hosted. And there are other great ways to show your ministry and your commitment to your religion than by hosting a tent city. I will end at that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I took up an awful lot of time and so I really do feel the need to allow anybody else if they want to. Great comments, I think, from the council. Thank you. I think you, you all are understanding the, the issue here, so I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay? Oh, wait, do we need to give direction to institute the Lupa?
So on the two, one is to initiate the land use code amendment with the recommendations and the second recommendation would be for the council to retain oversight of the process and hold the public.
Can we do those together? Is that?
I.
I would imagine, I think in this case, from what I've heard, council member Robertson and then.
I move to initiate the land use code amendment and for the council to retain the process, including holding the public hearing. Second.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. John, you raised your hand and but then said that you seconded it. You didn't have a question about separating the two.
I was going to make a motion.
Oh, okay, okay. So moved and seconded, any discussion of the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the good explanation as well. I am trying to get my little machine here to work and it's not wanting to help me out. Oh, well, I'll figure it out. Okay, next is the economic development report. This is our quarterly report. Mr. Miyaki.
I would, you've pretty much said it all. We're here to get our report out on the second quarter, as you, as you mentioned, and I'm gonna just go ahead and turn it over to Jesse Canood, our chief economic development officer, as well as he, I'll let him introduce his staff person. I would say there's no ask of the council, this is an information only, a shared item. Jesse?
Thank you, City Manager Miyaki. Thank you, members of council, for making time for us this evening for a quarter two update to you. Just to front load it, tonight's presentation is, as the city manager mentioned, for information only, we're not seeking any direction tonight. I mention that because the last time we were here with council, back in July, we discussed updates to the economic development plan. Tonight's discussion is on the existing economic development plan approved in 2014. And with that, I would like to give my, give a couple of minutes for my new coworker to introduce herself. We've hired a new economic development manager for the team, Philly Marsh, who comes to us with extensive experience from the city of Kirkland.
Thank you, Jesse, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. I'm just thrilled to be in bold and beautiful Bellevue. I do come with over 15 years of marketing, economic development, and project management experience and I'm excited to present to you tonight. So tonight's agenda will be an update on efforts in business recruitment, business retention, small business assistance partnerships, as well as we'll touch on upcoming economic development items that we'll bring to you.
And for tonight, Philly and I will be tag teaming as she just started a couple of weeks ago, so she's not fully versed in all of the, all the great stuff that happened back in quarter two. So as a reminder, we are talking about the ED plan approved by council in 2014, which includes a couple of key items. So on the recruitment side of, of our work, this year we've met with 24 firms that are interested in opening offices or investing in Bellevue. We have done a variety of trade shows and other engagements to build those leads and prospects, one of which is our annual trip to select USA, which is the annual trade show put on by the US Department of Commerce every June in DC. It's the largest convening of international companies that are interested in investing in the US. We met with a variety of firms ranging from a personal security app startup out of Australia to an ag tech company out of the Middle East to a Chilean survey platform, all of which were interested in opening offices on the west coast of the US. And we're all very impressed by the wonderful talent pool that we have here in the Seattle region. We also worked with GSP and the state, Washington State Department of Commerce teams to help sell the state at large. So whether it was providing some additional information during a meeting or handing off a lead that was not a fit for Bellevue but might have been a fit for another city in the Seattle region or for a city in eastern Washington, we worked very closely with the state and Greater Seattle partners to make sure we were selling Washington State at large. We also attended a new, excuse me, it was our second year attending the International Council of Shopping Centers Annual Trade Show, which happens every May. It is the largest convening of retail property developers in the US and we intended for the second year to both sell Bellevue or promote Bellevue to new developers who have not been in the region and also improve our relationships with our existing property owners and talk to them about their investments as well as talk to them about new opportunities for them to build and invest here in Bellevue. As well with, we worked with Greater Seattle Partners on a Chinese mobile payments platform company that decided to open an office here in Bellevue. It'll be a small office, but it's hopefully the first of a larger investment from them down the road. They're active in 13 different markets across, across the globe and have chosen the Seattle market as their entry point for the US. So we're very happy to welcome the company, which is wise easy, and they will be opening up in downtown Bellevue.
For business retention and expansion, one thing we'll be bringing to the September 23rd council meeting is the results of the third biannual business survey. We are finalizing those results from that survey conducted by Northwest Research and we are happy to see that Bellevue continues to receive high ratings from businesses in all of its key metrics.
Also on the business retention and expansion front, we met with a variety of companies here in Bellevue in the second quarter. A couple of quick highlights from those meetings, one of which was TerraClear. It's a Bellevue-based ag tech agricultural technology company. It was one that I did not expect to find doing business here in Bellevue, but they are building both an autonomous, autonomous hardware as well as artificial intelligence software that helps to solve the age-old problem of very large rocks and farms that could break very expensive equipment. So they're doing a lot of the AI work and the Bellred neighborhood and then the actual hardware is being tested out in the farms in Idaho. It's a wonderful company. Again, ag tech was not one I expected in Bellevue, but it shows the breadth of what can be done here in the city. Another company also in the Bellred area I wanted to highlight tonight is the Don Bennett Drum Studios. They're a drum shop, retail center, and a school also in the Bellred area. And I bring them up because they are a, an example of companies in Bellred that are doing a bit of struggling with all the construction that's happening in the neighborhood. As you can imagine, with both light rail and road construction, they've had some challenges getting customers to their business. But we worked very closely with Sound Transit as well as our small business advisor to make sure that they got connected to resources that could help them with marketing and promotion and also with Sound Transit to make sure that we could provide signage that the construction workers who are out there were directing people into the parking lot as opposed to telling them that they couldn't turn in. And we're hopeful that the studio will be doing much better once and have many more customers once construction wraps up. I bring that company up specifically to note that we will likely hear more from businesses in the Bellred area as construction ramps up on 124th, 132nd continues to be closed for light rail construction, and a couple of other roads will also be impacted over the next year. So we are keeping our eye on it and we will be meeting with more businesses in the Bellred area to make sure we're understanding what the challenges are in the neighborhood through the construction period. On the small business front, we continue to work with our partners on the Startup 425 program. In the spring, we offered our foundations program across the five partner cities, which had more than 900 participants, which is, I think, a record for the program. Of those, about 300 or one-third of the participants were in Bellevue. So there continues to be a strong demand for those foundational courses on entrepreneurship here in the city. The charts on the right side of the slide reflect the diversity statistics from the spring. We continue to do well with over 50% of the participants identifying as female and over 50% identifying as persons of color. So we're very proud that the statistics of the participants match the broader statistics of the east side. And those statistics are all done organically. We've not done any direct marketing or engagement, so we've found a very strong audience for this particular program in our diverse communities on the east side. Also on the Startup 425 note, we did bring together a small advisory group to help the partners with identifying opportunities to improve Startup 425 as well as ways to grow the resources that we're providing and education we're providing to the community. That work is currently underway and we're hoping to have it wrapped up in Q4 of this year. We'll bring back any recommendations that come out of that work to the council for consideration. Another note on the small business side is in the second quarter, we were able to rehire our small business advisor. So the Small Business Development Center is a nationwide program, part of the Small Business Administration, and we have one advisor on the east side that's hired in partnership with Redmond. And so that position had been vacant for a few months after the prior advisor had chosen to take a position with a startup company. So we hired Partik Singh in March and he's been working diligently to meet the small business community on the east side. So we, he's still building up his record of success, but we did have just a few weeks ago a note from him that he was able to help a small business secure a $1.4 million capital loan to help them grow their business. So there's a star, an asterisk on that number because it's officially part of Q3, so it's not in the chart that's on the screen, but we did think it was a really good success. $1.4 million for one company that's growing is very important. So we're reporting that a little early. Last topic for tonight is our ongoing partnerships, many of which are funded through the Port of Seattle's Economic Development Grant. So Bellwether, our annual arts festival, will be kicking off this Friday, paid for partly through a port grant. We also worked with the BDA in Q3 to deploy some additional seating and the Yellow Lanterns along the Grand Connection Route. That was partially funded by the Port's Economic Development Grant. And then our travel to select USA and our marketing of the city via the Innovation Triangle Partnership continues to be supported by the Economic Development Grant. We have also been working with several partners on application to the state for an innovation partnership zone designation that would help cement Bellevue as a hub for 5G telecommunications innovation. So that application is currently with the state. It has been reported on several times in the Business Journal because it's a very exciting piece of news. There's not a lot to report back to the council yet as we're still working with the partners on the business plan and the specific tactics of the partnership based depending on the outcome of the application process with the state.
Coming up, there's some exciting items that we look forward to bringing you over the next couple of quarters. Again, we'll bring the results of the business survey to you on September 23rd and the data from that survey will help inform the economic development plan. And this plan will examine Bellevue's economic landscape, collect feedback from internal and external stakeholders, and create strategies for continuing intentional growth within the city of Bellevue. The plan will focus on strategies to foster small business and entrepreneurship, retail, the creative economy, as well as capacity building and partnerships. We'll also bring that report of the Bellevue Downtown Association's work on the Grand Connection on December 9th, as well as the 5G partnership IPZ zone and Startup 425 recommendations. And with that, we open it up to questions and comments.
Great. Are there, did you have a question, council members on, or a comment?
Comments?
Go ahead, please. I'm sorry, yes.
Oh, thanks. Well, I'm really excited about this because to me, the fact that you were talking about both global and local means that that's kind of the bookend of, of the pieces that we're trying to do. And as I was thinking about the questions that I had about, you know, how else can we help, what do they need, then your presentation rolled right into that from the standpoint of, of starting up that advisory committee to really look at how we can improve because ultimately we are supporting from the lens of those businesses that we're trying to help. I did have a question though, and that is, when I look at our action plan and kind of our scorecard, what I'm wondering is, is there a way for us to, to calculate the revenue impact for the costs that we're spending in this effort? So one of the slides you had talked about the fact that they were able to get a $1.4 million, you know, capital to do some things. So I'm not sure exactly, you know, how best to do that, but I think that it's always important for us to see that when we spend money, what is it that we're actually getting from the standpoint of that overall impact to our community? And then from the standpoint of the construction impacts in Bellred, I guess what I'm wondering is, is that something that we're also keeping an eye on because construction can be really impactful, people can't quite find the business and then they think, well, maybe I'll go somewhere else for now? Are we tracking that and then what are we doing if we find that there are businesses that happen to be struggling because they're in an area where, you know, it's hard to get in their driveway?
Yes. Wonderful questions. Thank you, council members on. So on the scorecard, we can take a look and see what options there are for calculating the revenue impacts based on our work with companies. We'll definitely see what we can find. As far as Bellred and the work we do, once we identify a company that's been impacted, we bring in the small business advisor, Partik, as well as contact Sound Transit very often depending on what the particular needs of the company are. But we are very, we are very, very cognizant of the construction impacts and Sound Transit has a very strong team behind them to help with signage and flagging and directing people to direct places.
So does Sound Transit actually provide that signage for them, saying business is open this way or?
Yes, they do.
Oh, that's great. I really like that. And then lastly, I'm excited about going after that, the state for the innovation partnership zone. And I'm assuming we're gonna get some kind of a briefing too about 5G implementation because I know we've had those policies in place and we're not quite there yet in terms of actually having anything installed, but I think understanding that timing will be important too.
On the 5G rollout and implementation of the infrastructure, I leave that to others, but on the IPZ, yes, we'll make sure to come back to council once we have more to report.
So is there someone else that already has this as a zone or would we actually be the first?
We would be the first one in the state of Washington and possibly one of the first in the country.
Oh, that's great. Thank you. Excited for that.
Great. Council member new in house.
Thank you, Mayor.
Philly, first, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's great to have you here. It's kind of like getting moved up from the triple, what, AAA to the majors to double. That's just friendly manager. I love Kirkland, I go to Kirkland. So what I'd love to see from this going forward too, Jesse, I'd love to know a little bit more about our strategy when we go to some of these events in terms of what are, what are our goals when we go and then what are some of the key learnings and key takeaways? We seem to focus a lot and it's, it's good to know you met with various companies, but what are the specific takeaways that, you know, that we've learned from that as it relates to Bellevue? What are we doing right? What are we doing wrong? What can we approve on? Those are the kind of key things that I really, versus just a list of companies that, that we've met with, which is, again, it's still important, but, and it seems like you're hitting the mark, but those specifics would be great. And I'm so glad you pointed out TerraClear, I had a chance to actually get a tour of their operations on it and it's just so amazing. And it shows what, what a great city Bellevue is and how we attract so much great talent that even an agricultural technology company that, you know, unless, unless it was like an intentional harking back to our history back in 1950s, I mean, it's, it's amazing. And that we have a capital firm here that specific is agricultural investment. It's just fantastic. So I just want to point that out and I'm glad you're reaching out to those types of early-stage technology companies like that. Now, on the Startup 425 foundations, are we, and I wasn't sure if council members on touched on that. on this, but are we tracking, you know, those entrepreneurs that come in and go through those classes, and what, are we tracking actually how many jobs or how many companies are created, how many jobs are created, and the financial impact of that? Are we, do we track that? We do, okay.
We do. So we have on an annual basis, and the program is still young, so I think we only have one full year's worth of data.
Sure.
But we do track the number of participants who go on to get an advisor or a mentor to help them build out their business plan and actually start up the business.
Yep.
And we do reach out to them as well to survey whether they've actually taken the step of filing for a business license and starting the business. We did find that it was difficult to get respondents to the survey, but we're gonna, we keep, we keep at it, and we will be doing the survey again this year.
Okay.
We do want to track outcomes, not just activity.
Good, good. Perfect, exactly what I'm looking for. Thank you. And then, again, I wasn't sure if Councilmember Zon meant to touch on this, but the, such a major announcement, the fact that this 5G zone between the city of Bellevue, the state of Washington, or the University of Washington, and the city of Bellevue. It is such an incredible opportunity for the city of Bellevue, including one of our largest employers. I know this is a little outside of your realm, but I think we need to keep the, you know, the pedal on the, on the pedal there, and, and continue with that, and, and make sure that we, I think we've stalled a little bit on the, on the design criteria for the polls, and we really need to get that established, because my understanding is that the carriers are starting to get a little anxious regarding that. You know, we've got such incredible plans, such incredible things going forward. I mean, this would be national news. And, you know, we're doing all the right things, we just got to keep up with the, with the pace that we're moving forward here. So I'll put that bug in your ear as well. But, but great update. Thank you for that, and Philly, welcome aboard again. Mr. Stokes.
Yeah, a couple of things. I agree with the comments made already. This is amazing, what we're doing, and I like the way you're putting it together in the report. We didn't talk about this, the, the speech handed out, the 2019 Action Plan. And I was gonna ask a question before I looked again at this, is that you have here the 2014 ED Plan, and that's what we're working on now. So this is the, the 2019 Action Plan is what you're proposing?
The 2019 Action Plan is based on the 2014 Plan, so that's the actual implementation on an annual basis.
Right, right. Yeah, no, I think it's good. I think you're, one of the things I like is you've, I think, gone more in terms of things that Councilmember Newenhouse was asking you about, is a little more quantification of what we're doing on those things, and that's great. I think it helps us on that. And I do want to say, I think, again, I want to read this over more carefully, because you've got a lot of material in here. It's, it's really good to be able to see all these, really, things put out here, the numbers and all of that, in terms of what you're doing. But it seems that the 2014 Plan basically works very well, and you're just building on that. And I do think that, I wanted to emphasize that the two foundational strategies, I hope we continue that, and I really appreciate the fact, again, that we have this concept that economic development and creating a 21st century environment includes more than just how many companies we bring in here, and how tall are the buildings and all that, that, you know, we, we need to attract, and the reason people come here, or attracted here, is because we attract talent, and we, and, and investment. And that has builders and companies then coming here. So it's, it's all put together, and we learned that, and, and a lot of the companies are already here now, when they, they talk to us about coming here. But again, emphasizing the arts and culture, the neighborhood character, the quality infrastructure, public safety, all these factors are as important to economic development as, again, the tall buildings and, and all those kind of things. So it's, it's keeping us focused on that economic development is the whole city, and how, what, the greater we make the city, and all these different factors, and we include the neighborhood, we include people from the outside coming in, working with us, the better off we are. So I think it's a good direction, and really appreciate the report, and good work, and welcome to you. We look forward to working with you.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes, welcome. And knowing how much we collaborate, collaborate with our economy, economic development with Kirkland and Redmond, I really appreciate that you're with us here, and your experience that you've already had working with us. I just want to thank you for this. And Jesse, I want to tell you how much I appreciate the support that you've given to small business. As a small business owner myself, I appreciate the retention work that you've done, and also the support that you give small business during this awkward phase that we're going through with all the road construction. So please keep up the good work.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee, did you have anything for this to say?
If you find.
And Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Good. Just, again, welcome aboard. Keep up the great work. I do want to say I appreciate looking into the issues related to Bellred there. And we may want to get Mr. City Manager, just maybe from a transportation standpoint, a update on the roads that are open, the roads that are closed. This is the time of year when I go through there a lot, because it's my path to Bellevue Muni, and so always take a look at what's going on there. And I did notice and saw the 124th closure. That's fairly significant to a lot of very large companies, and to some that, and the construction that's going on in the, to the Spring District, and also, I want to say it's a closure that's coming up on 20th. And these are significant closures. They're, you know, for months at a time. So maybe we could get just a, in the manager's report, maybe we could get an update. And I know it's really been, there's been great work done by the whole team at making sure people know those businesses are open. So really appreciate that. That's just another aspect of economic development, and it's handled by a, you know, a multifaceted team here at the city. So again, thank you for the update. Is there any further business to come before the city council tonight? Seeing none, or adjourned?